I'd like to call to order the October 17th session of the Hazel Park City Council. Roll call.
Mayor Keaton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Webb?
Here.
Councilmember La Hero?
Here.
Councilmember Selman?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
That brings us to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, but before you stand, I'd like to thank Pastor Barry David for being here for us for a number of years. Even though I sometimes butcher his name, I have a cousin named Jerry Berry, so when I start to think of it, I throw out the Berries and no telling what I call him, but I really appreciate him being here for us. So if you'd please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Loving Father, we're thankful for the manifold blessings from your hand. We thank you for your favor upon our city, for new jobs and families that are moving into our town. We're grateful for our city manager and the administrative staff that he oversees that are running this city on a day-to-day basis. We're grateful, Father, for our elected officials who serve diligently and effectively with great integrity. We're thankful for our new police chief and other new officials that have been appointed. We pray, Father, for our first responders. May you protect them and hide them beneath the shadow of your wings. Tonight, we pray that you would lead in all discussions and may all decisions be according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the administration would respectfully request that we move Administrative Reports, Items One and Two, right up behind approval of the agenda as we have some guests in the area that are here for those items.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor Keaton, I'd like to make the amendment to move Administrative Reports under the approval of the agenda.
Support. The motion has been made. Does that include approving the agenda as a reason otherwise?
Yes, sir.
And supported. Discussion on the motion? Being none. Dissension to the motion? Being none. We have an agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests that you confirm the appointment of Lieutenant Brian Buchholz to be the next Chief of Police for the city of Hazel Park effective November 1st, 2017. We had an interview panel, and Mr. Buchholz was determined to be the top candidate. I have 100 percent confidence in his ability to do the job, and I look forward to working with him and the hard-working men and women of the Hazel Park Police Department to keep Hazel Park safe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we confirm the appointment of Lieutenant Brian Buchholz as Chief of Police and approve the employment agreement.
Support. Motion has been made and severely supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none. Dissension to the motion?
No.
Being none. The motion carries. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Lieutenant Buchholz, could you please approach the microphone and report for your swearing-in ceremony with Magistrate James Patterson, please?
I solemnly swear or affirm that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief of Police of the city of Hazel Park to the best of my ability. I do. Congratulations.
Twenty years ago, I never would have expected to be in this position. The city of Hazel Park's been great to me. City Council, thank you. City Manager, thank you very much. I'm up for the challenge and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we take up the next item, I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the outstanding work that outgoing Chief Marty Barner has done since he took over as Chief of Police. Marty, can you stand up? There you are, please. Just want to let you know, how did I miss? Marty, I want to thank you. You did an absolutely outstanding job. You came in and you did a great job of reducing crime, restoring morale, and building rapport with the police department and the city, and I want to thank you for all your efforts. Please be ready to come back at some point in the future so that we can give you the appropriate resolution honoring you for your service to this community because you did a great job, sir. So, thank you on behalf.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have an outstanding police department, and I would like to recognize the dedicated gentleman on the back wall there who do such a great job serving, protecting this community. Then I would like to take up Administrative Report Number Two, which is the appointment of James Finkley as City Clerk. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Finkley started in my office as an intern a few years ago. He did an outstanding job. Everyone loved him. Unfortunately, he decided that he wanted to pursue greener pastures, and he left us for a position on the west side of the state. That position as an Elections Director with a county gave him some great experience and helped season him a little bit, but of course, he realized, as so many other employees do who leave employment with the city of Hazel Park, that the grass is not always greener on the other side. So, we were fortunate enough to be able to retain Mr. Finkley's services again, and he decided that he wanted to move back to the good side of the state, and he came back here to Hazel Park, and we were fortunate enough to be able to employ him in our City Clerk's office. He's done an outstanding job, learning from Mary Ann and from Lisa Mayo, who have been outstanding mentors and instructors to him, and he is my choice to be the next City Clerk for the city of Hazel Park. So I would respectfully request that you would approve the appointment of James Finkley as Hazel Park's next City Clerk effective November 15th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It is with personal pride and enjoyment and pleasure that I move that we approve the appointment of James Finkley as City Clerk and approve the employment agreement.
Support. Motion has been made and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? Being none. Dissension to the motion? Being none. The motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Finkley, would you please come to the podium and be sworn in by Magistrate James Patterson, please?
No.
Mary? Mary Ann's going to swear him in. Okay.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Clerk and in for the city of Hazel Park, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I would just like to briefly say that it is an honor to be back in the city of Hazel Park. I felt like from the moment that I started here a few years ago, it's been a second home to me, and it is a pleasure to be back, and it's good to see everyone.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Finkley's parents are here in the audience, and I'd like to take this opportunity to tell them that you raised an outstanding young man, and you should be very proud of him.
Yes. I think we will confer.
I knew he was something special when he began his internship in my office, and he has never disappointed me or let me down, so look forward to working with you, Jimmy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the resolution for the 50th anniversary of the MCSU.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Steve Stewart and the other members of the MCSU who are in attendance to please come to the podium.
That means you, Nick.
A resolution honoring the Mobile Communications Support Unit's 50 years of service. Whereas, the dedicated members of the Hazel Park Police Department's Mobile Communications Support Unit, MCSU, have been volunteering to serve the citizens of Hazel Park for over 50 years. And whereas, the MCSU was formed during the 1967 civil disturbance in Detroit to act as eyes and ears of the Hazel Park Police Department to help protect the safety of Hazel Park and its residents. And whereas, recognizing the value of such an organization, the city leadership wisely decided to make the MCSU a permanent part of the Hazel Park Police Department, utilizing trained volunteers to be on the lookout for criminal activity and hazardous situations, and to report those situations to the proper authorities. And whereas, the dedicated volunteers in the MCSU donate thousands of hours a year watching for and deter criminal activity, as well assisting with emergency situations such as monitoring down wires, directing traffic, and assisting with special events. So, therefore, be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors the dedicated members of the Mobile Communications Support Unit for their service to Hazel Park and congratulates the MCSU on achieving 50 years of dedicated service to the city of Hazel Park. On behalf of the mayor and council, I am proud, and the residents of Hazel Park, I'm proud to present this to you, Steve Stewart, as the Director of the MCSU.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to say a few words?
We need volunteers. Basically, it's a simple job. We enjoy what we do. We're out here to help protect the citizens of Hazel Park, traffic down wires. We're proud of our record.
Speak into the microphone.
We're proud of our record, and we hope to keep the tradition going. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve, who should they contact for more information about joining this unit?
Pardon?
Who should they contact for information about joining the MCSU?
Try and contact me through the Police Department. I have applications down at the front desk of the Police Department also.
Very good. Please consider joining the MCSU if you want to help serve your community and act as eyes and ears for the Police Department. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you, Counsel.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Either one of you gentlemen want to say anything?
Your Honor, I would just want to comment that MCSU, one of the things, you see them driving around, folks notice them most around Halloween, but they are out every weekend and spend thousands of hours a year freeing up cops and firemen on things like down power lines or trees across the road, but one of the most neat things I've seen each of these guys do is they know which businesses, what time a lot of them let out, and sometimes it might be a hair salon with one person there, and they'll sit out in the parking lot until an employee gets to their car safely. They do a lot of little things like that and neat things in the community, and appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand 50 years is a long, long time to have a volunteer organization. In fact, I think Nick started when he was in junior high school. No, I don't.
I think Nick has been a member since 1973.
Wow.
That brings us to public discussion. Peggy Burleson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing me to be here. I have a couple of things I would like to say. First of all, I would like to thank the City Council, the city of Hazel Park, for all the help and support that you have given the Hazel Park Lions Club. This coming December, we are 70 years young here in Hazel Park, and if it was not for our citizens of Hazel Park, we would not be here. So, very much. The thing that we have coming up right now is our first fundraiser, and that is fruit cakes, candy bars, mints. It will start approximately around the 1st of November. We will go until probably about the 10th of December, as long as everything is still with us, or unless we sell out, will be done earlier. We would like to thank the City Hall for allowing us to be here to do our selling. We also are at the Ferndale, well, it's not Ferndale, it's Credit Union in Ferndale. We have been with them for about 25, 25, 30 years that they have allowed us to be in Ferndale, and they do not allow anybody else, any other Lions Club to go in to their union. So, we are very proud. We would like to thank Lion Mike Webb and his wife Robbie, as they are Chairman of this fundraiser, and they do a fantastic job. If anyone does not catch any of our Lions out anywhere, you can always go to Taylor Auto Shop at 21-939-John R. The candy is there. Pick it up, sell it. If there is any resident, you do not have to be a Lion yourself or us. All you need to do is go in and see Lion Robbie, because she's the one that takes care of all the money, because that's the only one we can trust.
Oh, thank you. I knew this. I knew you were going to give me a razzie.
I love you, Michael. I'm sorry.
But it was $60. Come in, buy a case, give them to your friends, give them to your family. We have a lot of people come into the shop and do that during Christmas, Thanksgiving time, but we won't have any candy till after November 1st.
Yeah, that's what I said, after November 1st. Check with Robbie and Mike and that, so if you can, please come out and help us. We would really appreciate it. Second thing I would like to thank is the Hazel Park Fire Department. They honor the Lions Club by inviting us and for their open house. Lions up Oakland, Macomb County, we have a vision screening, which is called Kid's Sight, and they invited our Kid's Sight program to be with them this past Sunday, which normally is really a good open house for the fire department, and I really hate to say it, is we had a couple incidents where the fire trucks all had to go out, and so the helicopter had to be canceled, and that's what the kids do. But we screened 14 people, and we came out on the bright side with 13 of them passed. We found one, so, but we would like to thank the fire department. We have been with them now for the last three, four years, and we really appreciate them, as we appreciate our police, our city. We appreciate everybody around here, but we want to thank them for allowing us to be with them on their open house. Now, the last thing I have, Mayor Keaton, as a resident of Hazel Park, not as a Lion, I wish you all the luck. I know you're retiring. I hope you and your wife and your family have a very good retirement life, and thank you for all you have done for the city of Hazel Park. You have been around many, 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 many years, but you're not that old. And one other thing I would like to say is the, last week, there was a candidate forum, Meet the Candidates. I was here. I was very proud to see the group of people that were here. All candidates running for office, I believe, did a very nice, well, job of speaking, and I thank each and every one of them. I also wish each and every one good luck on Election Day. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Mayor and City Council, just here today on behalf of the Historical Museum, wanting to remind you of our hours. They are the first Sunday of the month from noon to 4:00, and the third Thursday of the month from 6:00 to 8:00, and we will be open this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. Also, we are available for special group tours. If anybody wants to make those arrangements, they can contact me at 248-217-3952. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we cleaned out the Building Department this last week, and we arranged things, and we actually found things to donate to the Historical Commission.
And if you haven't, if you haven't seen the Historical Commission, they did a wonderful job, and it's real, it's real interesting, the history they have of the city of Hazel Park. Gary Harrison?
Not too bad.
Jeff, I'm kind of sorry to see you go. I'm, Tom, sorry to see you guys go. Hazel Park, I've lived here all my life. I think you guys done a great job for what we've had in the last 15 years. I mean, I've seen our city grow. I've seen new businesses come in in the last 10 years anyway, since the downfall, and now we got the uprising. That's what I call it, the uprising, because you look over at 10 Mile, that's what it is. And I've noticed on John R., and I got to give a lot of credit to Ed. Ed, you know, he's hung right in there. We haven't went into bankruptcy, so that's saying quite a bit there. And, you know, I love the way our council is right now, but, you know, I mean, people's got to move on. I understand that. You know, I got two of the people that's on your council that I was on a commission with, and, you know, I enjoyed working with them, you know, but, you know, like I said, Ed, you know, if you look at the things that Ed's done in the city, look what the council's done, you know, I can't find another city like this city. This city is a city of its own. You know, it's a small city. Everybody knows each other, and, you know, I'm here. Anytime you need a hand, I'm here, you know, I'm willing to help any way I can.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. And we still got the most beautiful woman, City Attorney, in Hazel Park.
Gotcha.
Nate Keaton?
I'm getting choked up.
Serves you right.
Okay, yeah, it teaches me. I wanted to take the opportunity to address you on two points. One, as a son, and two, as a citizen. As a son, I'm glad for your retirement. I think that you've worked for years. You deserve this time. You and Mom deserve this time to enjoy. As a citizen of the city of Hazel Park, it's unfortunate. I think that you being here, you being dedicated to the city, seeing the vision that you've had for the city, and seeing some of these things come to fruition, it's almost a disservice to see you leave, and the city will greatly miss you, but again, I want to see you enjoy your retirement, and I love you, and thank you for everything you've done. Thank you, son. Love you.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
Anything else, anybody else for public discussion? Didn't go one out? Okay.
Do we need a recess? Public discussion? Public discussion? Being none? We'll close public discussion. That brings us to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Support. Motion's made to approve and supported. Is there discussion on the motion?
For the record, take notice of the fact that you do have amended TAs there from Patrol, Command, and Dispatchers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of things on the consent agenda, Item Four, on page two, just a minor thing, but under Number Two, line two, there is no month of MACH, M-A-C-H.
We will make that significant correction, and we will miss your ability to edit all of our paperwork.
And on Item Seven, page one, Section Four, Line Five, there is a word that again says parking spaced for center. I think it means it should be spaces.
We will let the person know who drafted that. Mark Manquinn, not from our insurance company.
Yes. We will make sure that that is corrected.
Other than that, I have no objections to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
A motion was made and seconded. Discussion was held. Is there any further discussion? Being none. Dissension to the motion? Being none. That brings us to tabled items, since we have taken care of both administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests that this item be removed from the table and approved, please.
Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think that there's some clarification that needs to be brought up from our City Attorney. I don't, I'd like to see the minutes from the actual meeting which was passed to see if the actual special use was properly done, whether it goes with the applicant or with the business, or the business itself. I'm not getting clarification from the statement that we got here from Jeff Campbell. He's quoting stuff from the '40s here. I think we have something a little more current somewhere, and I don't want to change anything without our City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Sorry, sir.
I think we need to remove it from the table if we're going to do any discussion.
Okay.
I moved that we remove it from the table.
Support.
Motion's made and supported, discussion being done, dissension being done, items removed from the table, up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Councilman, someone. I just believe that there's some clarification needs to be done here to, so we don't reset our presidents for the future. I believe I'd like to have the minutes from that actual meeting which we passed, Simon's jewelry, and that way we can correctly give this applicant his business if it, if need be. If not, then we need to make an, uh, informed decision on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this meet, this has actually been researched, correct, Jan?
By Jeff, I just glanced at it, yeah.
Okay. Uh, it does, for the record, absolutely land use runs with the land and not the applicant. That's, and he, even if a motion was made to that, uh, effect by the planning commission, it likely would not be legal. So, because land use runs with the land and not the ownership.
We've done, Joey's jewelry went with the applicant.
Again...
And then when he sold the property, the other applicant had to come in and reapply for the special use.
Did you want to address this, Jeff?
This is what I'm trying to find.
Yeah, that's not, I don't even think that that's even a legal motion, even if that was done.
Well...
So it runs, unfortunately, from the research that we've done.
No, and, and, and the case I cited still is good case law, even if it's from a forties case. The other thing with American Jewelry and Loan is that was a special land use to pass with the land. They did not apply for a special land use. The, the golds did not appear before the planning commission for the same reasons that these gentlemen do not have to appear before the planning commission. Okay. All right. Maybe I stand corrected, but I just didn't get enough information, sir. Your, uh, report was a little vague. I apologize if that was the case.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the business license for National Jewelry and Loan Incorporated.
Motion's made to approve the license and supported. Is there a discussion on the motion? Being none, dissension to the motion? Being none, the motion carries.
Again, thank you, members of council. I'm sorry there was some ambiguity on that and something you thought may have been lacking in clarity, but we want to assure you that we did research this extensively after these, uh, questions were raised. So, I understand your concerns about this type of business. The applicant is here, he is willing to meet with any one of you, uh, to, uh, you know, demonstrate to you his character and his willingness to run a good business here.
I didn't question his character. It was more or less the procedure in which the work was handled. I just want to make sure it was correctly done.
Okay, uh, would...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since we are on this item, uh, does the applicant have anything he would like to say about his business?
Step up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
This evening, um, my name is Michael Anton, and I am with the, uh, company, uh, National Jewelry and Loan, and we recently got word from the state that we needed to change the name, so the official registered name is Universal Jewelry and Loan, so just to let everybody get that. And, um, I do have copies here of some information about myself, and I would like to answer any kind of questions anybody would have about the business. I, I understand a lot of people are concerned about, you know, the stigma that a jewelry and loan has, and, uh, just want everybody to rest assured, my family, my first cousin actually started his first jewelry and loan in, um, nineteen ninety. It's Motor City Pawn Brokers. They have four locations in Metro Detroit right now. They have upwards of fifty to seventy employees, and they are highly regarded on, you know, on the Google reviews and, uh, you know, the Yelp reviews, and a lot of people, a lot of people enjoy going to their facility. They, you know, they, they demonstrate respect to the customers, and they treat people differently than you see in typical, this typical, you know, what you see on TV or, you know, if you, if you watch YouTube on pawn shops and things like that. So, we try to do things with respect for everybody and treat everybody the correct way, and most importantly, we like to follow the rules. Uh, if, if anybody, um, I did hand in a, a couple documents that showed our history, and, uh, what that shows is the step, the step-by-step that I had, actually in preparation for today's date, um, from the, from contacting my lawyer, doing everything the right way. He actually did not even use the purchase agreement that was drafted by the seller's agent. You know, he fine-tooth combed it and found a lot of mistakes, and we drafted, um, a new purchase agreement, and just to let you, you know, just to give a little bit of an example, that purchase agreement was so extensive, it was between five to six thousand dollars for the customization of that one and the revisions and the back and forth with Mr. Smolkin's attorney and, you know, to make sure everything was correct on both sides. He wants to make sure he protects everybody and everything's legal. Excuse me. So, we also had the land survey taken care of. We had the phase ones, environmental was perfectly clear. We actually received a grant from the county for that. Uh, we re, uh, we formed two companies. One company is M A R Properties One LLC. That's going to be purchasing the building, and, uh, right now we're debating whether we're not gonna pay, you know, pay cash for the building or finance it. We still don't know yet, but either way, you know, funds are available. Uh, Universal Jewelry and Loan, everything was registered properly with the county and with the state.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to cut you off, and I, this is, uh, I'm sure you had prepared. I think what we have here, though, is our, uh, Mayor Pro Tim in another life served on a number of commissions and boards, and he's sort of our watchdog procedurally with these other boards, so when he sees something that sparks something that in his past life, uh, he, he checks it out, and it's checked out, and I, I think he's satisfied now. What we called you up for is more of, welcome to Hazel Park, what's your, what's your business?
I'm a little nervous, sorry.
What, what time are you open? You know, those kinds.
Easy, quick stuff. Okay, I'm sorry about, so I'm planning on start, okay, I have a, I have a pawn business in New Haven that I'm, I'm selling to my old business partner, because I'm just trying to get away from business partners. But, uh, to be quick, it's probably gonna start off as a ten to six. We'll see how every, I like to maximize when I open a business, maximize the hours, and I'll probably end up doing eleven to five in the winter time. I don't like to be open past dark. And, um, it's probably gonna be what, you know, ten to six in the summer, eleven to, I'm sorry, yeah, eleven to five in the winter, right around there, you know.
And do you have the address?
Yes, they have, uh, two four eight four four is the address, but that used to be, it used to have three units in there, so they have two four eight three four also, but the land survey, I believe, went to two four eight four four.
So it's a couple of blocks south of Ten Mile on John...
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, connected to that pharmacy over there.
Right.
When do you open?
I'm gonna say I need about two to three months for build-out and painting and, you know, getting all the showcases. I would say probably February, right around there, January, February.
Welcome to Hazel Park.
Oh, thank you so much. And I just wanted to say you guys have really a good staff. I tried with several different cities, and, um, it seemed like they weren't too proactive, and they were trying to give more of problems rather than solutions, and, you know, I really appreciate, from the day I stepped in here, was speaking with, you know, with Linda and the staff up front, and then with James, you know, I met James up there a couple times, and everybody was just, I was just surprised that everybody was very flexible and nice to work with, 'cause I had everything lined up, ready to go. So, I think you appreciated what I had too, so thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question for the city attorney. Do we need to amend our motion to reflect the name change, or is that just something that can be done in the city clerk's office?
No, that could be done in the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
It's an amendment.
Right. Uh, that brings us to boards and commissions. Appointment new members to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests the appointment of Amanda Klein and Mary Ann Geraldowski to the Recreation Board.
So moved, Mayor.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported, discussion on the motion?
Who is this Mary Ann Gerald... I don't know.
She's new. Okay, the motion was made and seconded, discussion was held. Any further discussion? Being none. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to thank Mary Ann. Uh, if she thought she was gonna get away tonight without me saying something good about, uh, her and her service, uh, as a city clerk, uh, she was wrong. Of course, I'm going to embarrass her and tell everybody in Hazel Park what an outstanding job that she did as city clerk for the city. I used to tell Mary Ann, "Mary Ann, I love you because you are drama-free," and she always was drama-free. She came in, she did her job, she did her job in an excellent manner every single day that she showed up. She was committed to Hazel Park and committed to doing the best job that she could. Uh, what an example that she is for the other employees about how you should be dedicated and committed to your job. In fact, uh, one of our younger employees, Serene Papakin, who's our recreation director, she said, "I use Mary Ann as a role model for how I want to be when I do my job." So, I want to thank you, Mary Ann, for the outstanding things that you've done for the city. I'm glad that you're still gonna stick around and serve on the Recreation Board and continue to be part of our Hazel Park family, because, uh, you've just been a pleasure to work with.
That brings us to new business. Counsel, any new business to be brought to the floor? Administration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This isn't really new business, but it's something that has not been discussed at this table yet, but needs some discussion at some point in the future, so it will be new business. And that is with the accelerated I-75 project, there is the potential of traffic issues on the service drive, um, northbound and southbound. If there are lane closures, or in fact even freeway closures, uh, the traffic will just be fed onto the service drive. I recall when that was done, when they were working on the interchange for six ninety six, uh, before several people here were even born, uh, the, uh, several of the streets before Ten Mile Road and before Eight Mile Road on the southbound side, um, were closed, um, from the service drive, because, uh, vehicles would just use the residential streets to cut over to John R., and it became quite an issue, including, um, commercial vehicles. There were semis that would go down residential streets because traffic got backed up that much, and we don't have enough police officers to ticket them all. So, uh, I, I would suggest that, uh, the administration get together with, uh, the police officers, or the police department, and do some traffic control investigation, studying of the, uh, impact of the accelerated construction of I-75, north and southbound, on the residential areas. And, uh, we should also think about the impact of, uh, the increased traffic on the, uh, the, the pavement of the service drive that has been redone and is still in pretty decent shape. If it receives, uh, over a period of a year or two, uh, trucks with unlimited weight, um, going over them in the middle of winter, that, that could be bad. And then, uh, Mayor Pro Tim just whispered in my ear, uh, the impact of traffic on John R. as well. So, uh, it's something that needs to be, uh, explored and looked into ahead of time before, uh, before it becomes a real problem.
Uh, and I will even throw one more thing into the mix. We just got the report back for how much it will cost to mill and fill South John R., so we will be looking at a bond probably next year to do work to John R. So I think what we're gonna try to do is shift that work in as quick as possible and do that next year, so we can kind of beat the clock on the John R. widening, so we don't gridlock the people of Hazel Park into Hazel Park, uh, and get John R. done first. But make no mistake about it, this is gonna cause some, some traffic hazards. And again, the state, uh, threw a little wrench into our plans for John R. by accelerating this process, as I've briefed you all, they're gonna use a, a brand-new scheme, a private company to come in who will actually take ownership of the road for thirty years and bear responsibility for construction and maintenance of that road for that thirty-year period. And, uh, again, it's an innovative thing that they're doing, and this will accelerate their plans, obviously, for John R., wha, I mean, for I-75 widening, which will, uh, take place within the next three years. So we'll make sure that we coordinate best that we can with M.D.A. to try to minimize the traffic impact as much as we can. But a lot of that's gonna depend on when they're gonna do it and what their timetable is. We may have to put John R. off, so we need to see what their timetable is and when that's going to happen.
Just food for thought, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Big project, uh, that's definitely gonna have to be looked at.
Yippee.
Yeah.
I know you're looking forward to it.
I can't wait.
All right, is there any other new business to be brought to the floor? New business, new business? Being none, move on to show cause hearings, one three seven West Hayes.
Is anyone here from one three seven West Hayes?
I am surprised that he is not here, although, um, he did enter into a consent order with the district court for demolition of this home. However, nothing has been done as of yet, so we have to follow through.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests, uh, following the administration's recommendation to demolish the structure.
Counsel, you have the administration's recommendation. What's your pleasure?
Motion, oh, go ahead. Move, uh, approval of demolition of one three seven West Hayes.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. You all have the one hundred eight by ten color glossy photos with circles and arrows on the back of each one. Any discussion? Any discussion? Being none, dissension to the motion? Being none, motion carries, follow the administration's recommendation. That brings us to one sixty West Hayes.
Mr. Mayor?
First of all, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here for one sixty West Hayes that wants to discuss? Wait a minute. We did open it up, I did ask if anyone was here. Yes, is there anyone here for one six zero West Hayes?
We'll close public discussion, close discussion on the issue. You have the administration's recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, the administration strongly recommends demolition of one sixty West Hayes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we follow the recommendation of the administration and demolish, uh, the str, structures on one sixty West Hayes within thirty days.
Support.
Motion is made and supported, discussion on the motion? Being none, dissension to the motion? Being none, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, I just want to thank Jan Drum and the Code Enforcement Department for their hard work on this issue. They did an outstanding job. We move with light speed. We are doing this in addition to a court order that has already been signed by... by District Court Judge Geddard, ordering the demolition of these two homes. They are substantially derelict, and I'm glad we were able to bring this to such a quick resolution when we became reacquainted with the problem. And I want to thank Jan Drum for being innovative and creative, and I want to thank the Code Enforcement Department for working hard to get us the evidence that we needed to make this happen.
Thank you. And there's enough people here to... Let me say it again, and I say it quite frequently. Understand, this is not somebody from Code Enforcement drove by this house and it was empty and they didn't like the way it looked and we're going to tear it down. This is the culmination of months and months and sometimes years of ticketing, reevaluation, reinspection, going to court. This has been a long time coming. So when we get this here, and it sounds like, oh, no discussion, no anything, we have reams of papers and reports that we've gone through time and time again. And that's how this comes to fruition. So it's not just, we're going to tear your house down. This is a very deliberate process that keeps Hazel Park looking good. That brings us to communication from department heads. Any department heads have anything? Nothing? That brings us to communications from city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're drawing to a close for this council term. First of all, I want to tell each and every one of you, it's been my distinct honor and pleasure to serve as your city manager. As always, I work at the pleasure of the city council. On any given date, you can give me 30 days' notice according to my contract and tell me it's time for me to be done, and I will go on my merry way. So I respectfully appreciate the confidence that you've shown in me to continue to allow me to serve as the city manager for the city that I've grown up in and the city that I love. I want to thank each and every one of you. You've been great bosses, and again, I hold you all in high regard. I have two special things that I want to say tonight. First to Tom Selman, who joined us a few years ago when Jack Lloyd left the city council. Tom, you've been a pleasure to work with. You were a pair of safe hands to place this city in, and you are a man of wisdom and deep thought, and you love this city, and you have a great sense of this city's history. It has been my pleasure to serve under you, to work with you, and I wish you the best. I hope that you will rejoin us by serving on boards and commissions. And do not go quietly into the good night. I think that you have a lot more service to give. So thank you very much. Finally, I have to recognize my wonderful mayor, Jeff Keaton, who is absolutely beyond a shadow of a doubt one of the best public officials I've ever worked with and I have ever met. You are a smart man. You are a wise man. You love this city, and you have been a historic public official in this city. When they write the city of Hazel Park, your name will be all over it because of the tough decisions that you had to make during your service on city council. I respect your opinion a great deal. You are wise, and you genuinely think about things. You genuinely love this community. And I want to thank you. I want to thank your wife. I want to thank your family because they have all been great partners with you in your service as well. So Keaton family, thank you for always being part of Hazel Park and being supportive of everything that the city has needed and asked of you. So thank you. But truly, I've known you since I was Nate's T-ball coach when he was eight years old and I was 17 back in 1981. And like I said, I... Truly, you are one of the smartest, best public officials that I've ever worked with or that I've ever seen. When I refer to you as my mayor, I say, "That's what one looks like. That's what a good one looks like. That's what a good mayor should be." You are simply outstanding, and Hazel Park will miss your service. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Communication from city attorney?
Thank you. If you guys will bear with me for a few minutes because especially the two that this is their last night because I know they're ready to go off or enjoy their lives. But recently, I have... I've been hearing and reading things, and I've been remiss, maybe, in not informing new people or council exactly what is going on with code. I hear a lot of complaints. However, what you don't hear is all the great things that they do. First of all, they're training. The code officers are trained by me as the chief law enforcement officer for the city of Hazel Park. They are then trained by the state. They go to classes. They become certified as code officers. They have been trained so well that at their last training session, Code Officer Pam Patterson was asked to get up and teach them. That is a feat. They said, "We gain more compliance than any other municipality around, that we know how to do things better, and we accomplish more." They have even tried to hire our code officers away from us. That is a compliment. As a matter of fact, we have Code Officer Patterson working on the weekends in another city, teaching them how to do their job. I'm pretty proud of them. They have the respect of the judges and the magistrates that they go in front of. As a matter of fact, Judge Geddard doesn't make a move on a code violation without asking their opinion. That's high praise. I'm in the process... We only have one and a half, and I say one and a half code officers because one's full-time and one part-time. I'm in the process of hiring two more. We've made substantial changes. We need more people. I've been granted that privilege to hire two more. But a code officer is not a job for everybody. We've hired active and retired police officers in the past, and they have not been able to do the job properly. So it takes a special person to be able to accomplish what these two girls that I have right now have. Also, the code officers work closely with the building department. They assist the inspectors when they go out on nuisance hearing documenting. You saw this tonight in the package that you got. They do a lot of work. Without them, the inspectors couldn't do their job. They, first of all, bring the buildings to the attention of the inspector and then document everything in order for me to be able to win in court. In the last few months since I've taken over in the building and code department, we have gained more compliance than in the 22 years I've worked for Hazel Park. What you need to know is that we've done such things as had receivers appointed by the court, asked the court to appoint receivers for the large apartment complexes, when they would not clean up their place and make the repairs that were necessary. The receivers were appointed. They did so at the owner's expense, not a dime of Hazel Park's money. We have also alerted the city to safety matters. As our pastor will affirm, we had Code Officer Patterson, who noticed that the steeple was becoming a safety hazard, and she was afraid that it was going to come off the roof and kill somebody. What she did? She alerted M.D.O.T. closed off the roads. She alerted the fire department, got them up there to assess it, and she got contractors to come in and give prices and financing so that could be safely removed. And she did this all by communicating long distance with the city manager, who was in Mackinac all the time. That's the type of code officers that we have. They enter into dwellings that nobody would even want to be around. There's hoarders that these places are so bad, and they have even gone into places where they've had to bring out dead bodies. These are our code officers, these two women. Code also assists the police department on many occasions and animal control. Code addresses complaints and issues such as weeds, blight, junk and debris, zoning violations, rats, animal feces, odors, parking violations. And contrary to one statement that was made, they cannot enforce any illegally parked cars on a street, only on private property. On the streets is for the police department. The building complaints and violations, such as broken windows, doors, open crawl spaces, crumbling chimneys, roofs, trees, sidewalks, garbage, improper outdoor storage, work being done without permits, vacant and abandoned structures, the list goes on and on. When Kroger was re-roofing their building without a permit, it was caught by a code officer. She made them come in with a stop-work order and get a permit. Permit costs $10,000. That if nobody else caught it, they would have got away without paying it. These are our code officers. Since January of this year, Code has sent out 2,733 notice violations, written 904 tickets that have been processed to date, and we're still waiting, court dates on many, and for over $164,000 in fines that have been assessed. And this does not include the unlicensed landlords, which is an additional over $100,000 a year that's brought in. And that doesn't include the fees that we get for past licenses that were not paid for or applied for. That doesn't include the complaints that we get in making sure that these buildings are brought up. As you know, over 40% of the houses in Hazel Park are rentals. We have gone... We have to find these owners because if we don't have the required five things on a ticket, date of birth, name, driver's license number, there's a couple other things that we have to have too, but I'm not going to repeat them. But the court will dismiss our tickets, and that's no good. We have brought people, owners, in from Japan. We have a lot of overseas investors buying houses in Hazel Park. We've brought them into court all the way from Japan. They do a great job. I know they have... They also go out and they provide help. When people have to move out of these dilapidated homes or because of health and safety reasons they have to move, they give them all the contacts, information, in writing, which shows, tells the people where they can go to get help, to get homes, to find, you know, someplace to stay. They also, if someone needs repairs because they've been cited, they need a new roof, they give them the numbers of all the organizations that will give them assistance with regard to the repairs. If they need snow removal and they're too infirm or too old to be able to do it, they're giving the names and the numbers of all the places that they can call to get volunteers who will help them with that. They give them information on rats and how to eradicate them. They give them information with regard to landlord and tenants, what they can do. These are just a few things that they carry in their car and they hand out to the residents. They are stopped on the streets constantly and asked for information. And yes, they're stopped a lot and asked to investigate places that they shouldn't go because it's just a neighbor dispute. We're trying to stop that or curtail it as much as possible because it does waste a lot of time. Remember, what you see is this type of thing, and then you see how they cleared it up. Show that down to council. You see this... You see this building? There you see what they were able to accomplish. You see these places that tenants have just destroyed? They were able to get them out, able to get it cleaned up. And look at, they're in the process of rebuilding the entire structure. Yeah. You have this building on Dequender. Look at what they've done. You have buildings that... This is on Dequender. You have nothing but a bunch of junk and cars and improper storage. Look at the outside of this now. Look at the inside. Remember I kept telling everybody about the parking lots being repaved on Dequender? That was code. Again, here are pictures of Landmark Church. I could go on and on, and I could deliver pictures here all night long, and you'd be here another 24 hours of what they do. And if you need me to educate everybody weekly on what's going on, I'll be more than happy to. It does take time to make these copies and get them to you. But I'm telling you, they work more than eight hours a day. They are here before everybody else's, and they're here after everybody leaves. They don't get paid for those extra hours each day. I'm very proud of them, and I just wanted to clear up any misunderstandings. Thank you.
And also for the record, I know Pam is here. I don't know if Leslie's here or not, but we also have Candy from the building department. She is here as well, as is Lisa Mayo from the clerk's office. And again, the building department, the clerk's office have also been instrumental in helping with code enforcement. Jan has revamped both of those departments in the past few months. We've redone the interior to accommodate better service for our residents and to facilitate them being able to do their jobs much more effectively. All these things are working to bring you a much more efficient and effective building department and code enforcement department. So I want to thank our employees for really going the extra mile. Again, we are looking for two part-time code enforcement officer positions. As Jan said, we never know who's going to be good at this, okay? But I want the city to know that our code officers are well-trained. They do an extraordinary job. Again, I wish we could have more of them. But it's important for everyone to remember as well that there is a due process that we have to follow for every ticket. And I went down to visit Pam, who is full-time and does come to staff meetings, comes to every staff meeting, as does Jan, so that we can go over any code enforcement issues that the council brings to us or that my office needs to become involved in. And I saw this stack in her office of tickets that is this big and this high, and those are the tickets that she's written that have yet to be adjudicated in the court system. So oftentimes, people see something and they say, "I want something done about that. I called code last week and nothing was done." Well, something was done. We just have this pesky thing called the Constitution and its due process provisions that we have to follow in order not to get in trouble with the court system or lose a case in court because we were overzealous and didn't do something properly. So it's very important that we follow those procedures. And again, I want to thank our code officers. Code enforcement will never be perfect in the city of Hazel Park. It will always be a work in progress, something that we are always striving to do, something to do better at each and every day. But again, we've had some extraordinary successes, and I want everybody to know that that's a result of the hard work that our personnel have put in. And you at home can help them by picking up the phone and reporting to our code enforcement department something that you see that's a problem. Don't post it on Facebook. We don't always monitor Facebook. Pick up the phone, call the code enforcement department. We are working on a tab for our website that will enable reports to be made via the website, and we're in the process of revamping that website, and we should have that new website up before the first of the year. But again, I want to echo what Jan says and jump in on her comments, but my code officers do a good job. And the city clerk's office also, a huge, important partner in that. Mary Ann, how many tickets have you written in the last year yourself? It's in the hundreds and thousands of dollars that she has recouped.
$288,000 in the last two years.
Going after unlicensed landlords. Now, we know there are more out there, and again, the best way that we can crack down on that is if you're aware of one in your neighborhood, you pick up the phone and you drop that dime and you let us know. So again, proud. I'm sorry. I mean, I'll give you the microphone back to you now and shut up.
And I'm sorry you guys have to go through this for the last day of your meeting. I'm going to miss you both. I think, you know, if we could hang on to each one of your legs and keep you here, we would. It's been a pleasure to work with you both. It's hard. We've had 14 years of progress, of just constant movement upwards when it's been the toughest times, when we didn't know if we were going to keep the doors open, when Ed had to come to us and say, "I'm sorry, everybody's getting cut across the board and everybody's going to do more than one job." We did it because we love the city as much as you guys, and you guys were... We did it because we love the city as much as you guys, and you guys were all there to hold our hands and say, "Yep, we're with you. Let's go, let's dig in, let's find some solutions." And I'm, I am very proud to have represented you guys. I really am. And I know that there isn't a department here who wouldn't say the same. I'm, I'm going to miss you tremendously. I wish you would both reconsider, I wish you could reconsider at this, at this late juncture. You can't, but that's how much we respect you guys. We really do. I just can't say enough, and I don't think anybody else could say enough either. It's, it's been great.
No, it always hasn't been great. Sometimes it's been miserable, but Jeff, you were always there. And, you know, again, it's there, no, there have been some awful times we've had to go through. We were on the verge of bankruptcy, we've, we've had some tragedies, there have been some crappy times, but you know what? We have all pulled together. And Andy, Mike, you guys appointed me, and Jeff was, came in right after, and we've been through a lot of years of some, some really, we've navigated some really nasty waters.
They were just absolutely horrific situations that I don't see how we tried to water through them. I guess by sheer determination and perseverance from everybody.
Well, it was nice. You guys all communicated, you put your heads together, and you all come from different walks of life, but you brought your ideas to the table. And sometimes you agreed, sometimes you didn't, but we worked through it, and I am proud to be a part of it.
I do want to say one thing to her comments, if you don't mind me here. She gave me a little tour of the code enforcement department, and they really improved. It smells better. It actually is cleaner, it's more organized, looks more professional. She and her staff, Candy.
Same Candy.
And Lynn and Pat, Pam, I should say, and whoever else was helping with that.
Lynn's here too. I didn't hear, she's behind, who calls his head, but there she is.
And they were showing me the informational's that they're putting out, you know, to some of the consumers, our residents are, are consumers. We're there to help them through times, you know, there are things they're wanting to do at their homes or whatever, to help out. They need to know the right information. And I got help when I was helping with my son-in-law, with the code officers giving me tidbits about what's code and what's not code when I was adding it. We've been building an addition on his house all summer. So we're, you know, I didn't know every code, but I had to go look it up as well. And using it, our new webpage, you can actually go through and look up some of the criterias for building and adding on. And if you have a question, if you don't have, if City Hall is closed, you can actually utilize our webpage through to hazelpark.org. And thank you again. I think things are moving in the right direction, and it's going good.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you.
Is that it, Jan?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, communications from Mayor and Council.
Although I was hoping to show a little bit more on the nuisance hearings to both Lynn and Candy, who are here tonight to see what council would like in their packages when they do these for you. But if there's anything, any other information that you want delivered that you think would be helpful, just let us know. They'll get it too.
We're good. I, I'd just like to say, who of you would like a job that beyond all the technical and knowledge that you have to have, would be a job like telling your son or daughter every day of the week, "Clean up your bedroom"? It's not a fun job, I'm sure. So they do a tremendous job. Okay, communications from Mayor and Council. Councilmember Bethany Holland.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I kind of feel like I have to respond to the code enforcement thing because I've been a harsh critic over the years. On record too of saying that very recently, under Jan's leadership, things have turned into turnaround. Huge improvements. These two properties here are in my immediate neighborhood, and I don't know if you guys could feel the ground shaking, but neighbors watching from home are doing a happy dance. One of these did have a dead body pulled out of it, and we've had multiple heroin overdoses in another one of the vacancies. So it's going to be nice to see them both go into house heaven. Claudia, you are a saint. Thank you for sharing Jeff with us these times, and I was privileged to support you guys the last election cycle, and I'm grateful that you made the commitment to stick around. I know, I know how hard this has been on your family, and I'm grateful that you, you shared Jeff with us. And conference call a little bit, Your Honor. Mary Ann, you are probably one of the most ethical, honest people I have ever dealt with. I am grateful to have, have worked with you and learned from you, and I'm glad that we're still going to have you around, and that you adopted a dog from the pound, and Gigi. And Councilmember Selman, I appreciate your, your honesty, your kindness, your gentle spirit, and your keen eye for punctuation. The election is November 7th. We're going to have a lot of new faces up here. Clearly, we have a lot of new in administration. We're going to have a new chief, a new clerk. Welcome, Jimmy. A lot of new things, but the one thing that's consistent is the amazing people that live in our community and that we are all working to achieve the same goals, and that's to keep our heads above water and, and just reach for the stars. Right now is the first time in a long time, because of the leadership team here, that we're able to, to really dream big and, and not just worry about keeping the lights on here. And it's a very, very exciting time to be in Hazel Park. Wish everyone the best as they're out campaigning. Thank you all, Jan. Do appreciate, there's been a lot of changes for the better. I'm happy with that. And I think I had one more thing, because I don't want to make Claudia cry again. Gleaners is going to be this Friday, the 20th, at 1620 East Elsa, which is the Ford Road or the Hazel Park School District Administration Building. And as Chuck mentioned, the museum is going to be open the 19th from 6 to 8, and November 5th is the first Sunday of November, and we're going to be planting spring bulbs around the rock out there, so you can come enjoy the memories inside and plant a memory to come enjoy in springtime. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tom Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that might be the last time I'll say that from this table. I have made some notes for my remarks this evening. I normally don't comment about national events from this table, but I'm going to do that this evening, and that is in this way. It is my sincere hope that we as a nation do not deteriorate to the point that we did 50 years ago, when I and two fellow soldiers returned from overseas and landed at Kennedy Airport in New York. We tried for over half an hour to hail a cab unsuccessfully. Finally, a police officer noticed us, and he said, "Fellas, I know what you're going through." He said, "It's going to get worse before it gets better too. We, in law enforcement, have it worse than you in military right now. They spit on us, they call us names, they throw things at us. You, they just disrespect for now, but it'll get worse." He said, "You're going to Fort Hamilton, I'll bet, for discharge." And we said, "Yes." And he said, "All right, I'll get you a cab." And he blew his whistle, and he stopped a cab, and he says, "You're taking these young fellows to Fort Hamilton." And he gave the cabbie a 20, and he said, "This is your down payment." After we went through Fort Hamilton and we got debriefed, the officer that told us what to do after we walked off Fort Hamilton suggested to us that we change out of our uniforms into civilian clothes, he said, "It will be a lot easier on you." And we looked at him funny, he said, "Trust me, I know what I'm talking about." So we did as he suggested, and he was right. And that was wrong. Let us not get there again, America. And let us not do that to our local uniform people or our military people, because by gosh, they are on our side, not on anybody else's. That's all I have to say about that, as somebody once said in a movie. I want to thank the residents of Hazel Park for trusting me for the past two years by filling in that little egg-shaped spot on the ballot. And enough of you did so. And I want to thank the city employees because we have some of the best ones in this state, from the part-timers on up to the top-notch. We are blessed in this town. And our uniformed people and our people that work behind desks, everybody is just, oh, And I want to say to those who are running for office, if you're elected, that's wonderful. If you're not elected, don't feel like you have lost, don't feel like you're a failure because you have done something that our mayor advocates at every meeting. You have participated in the democratic process, but you have participated at a, at a higher level. So don't, don't feel bad if you've lost, if you have not been elected. You have not lost. To whoever replaces me sitting up here, I have a few things that I would suggest to you. Listen to the residents. When they come up to the microphone, listen to the residents. When you encounter them in your travels around the city, listen to the residents because they will impart some amazing wisdom to you, and they will tell you things that you need Allow the city employees to do their jobs. Allow them to perform their duties without interfering with them. Don't, don't try to be their bosses. They have bosses, and their bosses have a boss. If there's an issue or a problem, take it up with the person over whom you are the boss, meaning the person that replaces me or the other four people that are sitting up here, the city manager. Do your best, do your best to love Hazel Park, because if you do that, you will be amazed at how much Hazel Park will love you back. And in closing, I want to say, I was so pleased to see young Mr. Keaton get up and do something that I advocate at the end of every meeting, and that is if you love somebody, tell them so. And if you have children, oh, tell them that you love them and hug them every day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Andy Licuro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What a hard show to follow, but that's nice. Way to go, Tom. I want to wish happy retirement to Marty and Mary Ann. You guys have a lot of productive life left in you, and I'm very happy that Mary Ann is joining the Recreation Advisory Board. To Mr. Keaton, to Mr. Keaton and Mr. Selman, it's been an honor and a pleasure. One of the things you have to keep doing in this position is learning, and when you have people like yourselves around, there's plenty of opportunities to learn many things from. And it's been an honor, a pleasure, and to serve with you, and I, I wish you well. It's, it's hard to say, "See you, go," but you, you've done, you've left your mark on these cities, this city. You won't be forgotten, you'll be missed, and, and all the other good things that everybody says about you. And probably some of the bad things they say about you, too. Jeff and I have sat down here for quite some time together and not always agreeing on things, but it's just, it's just been, just to learn, and that's what we do. We don't agree on everything, but we work with what's best for the city of Hazel Park I look forward to serving with the new council. I would hope everybody would, most of you would honor me with your vote in November. It's going to be an interesting new council. I want to congratulate Mike Webb on becoming our future mayor. Wow. We were both elected in 2001 at the same time, and I didn't, I didn't dream I'd still be here 16 years later.
Me either.
But we signed up for a task. The job, we really, you know, the financial picture of the city was not great. It's looking much, much better. Things have, I guess those tough times have actually made us tougher and stronger and better, and it's, there's just, we, we're not out of the woods yet. There's more work to be done, and I don't want to leave a position until the job's done. So as I, I just appreciate as well Tom's telling everybody to, if you love somebody, tell them and hug the kids and tell them. I hope someone will carry that tradition on, even if it's myself. And as I always say, it's, it's the bike weather still, look out for the bicyclists, it's getting dark. I stopped today and thanked some young kids for not walking in the street. There was four of them, and I said, "Hey, I want to thank you for not walking in the street." Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody. It's been an honor to serve up here and a pleasure, and we will hopefully see you next month. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, Mike Webb.
What can I say after all those great comments? But there's more to say. I've served with many, many people up here. And it's been an honor and a privilege. In my past life, I had to go to a... In my past life, I had to go to a, someone I, at the time was not friends with, we, I actually campaigned against them, in my past life. So, if you want to, you know, I'm just cliching you a little. It might be a roast even, I don't know, but, how can I say it the best? Jeff's been a good mentor for me. We've talked several times how we can better come up with creative ways to get through things. And I asked him to be on city council in 2001. And once he accepted, and he gives the lay of the land from Mr. Klobuchar, first thing out of his mouth was, "What the hell did you get me into?" He's been a dear friend through the whole time we've been on here for many years, as well as Andy LaCuro, Tom Selman here, and Jan Parisi, Jack Lloyd, even Ron Lawler the first year I was in. It takes a commitment to be up here and even a few months that Ben Colley was here and the years he served before. There's, it's a big commitment, it's a family commitment. This wears on your family and yourself for many years. It's not just a decision you take lightly. I enjoyed every moment, I had to work with everybody up here. And then the part I didn't enjoy was having to make the tough decisions and laying off people and asking all our employees to take 5 and 10 and 15% pay cuts over to do the recession. And we're gladly trying to work with them now to give back what little we can in increments that we can get them back up, but nothing replaces what they've lost. And it came from their hearts to give up that money because they love their community. We love our community. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. I feel like I'm losing a bunch of friends up here, but, Tom, it's such a pleasure to work with people that you know and you trust. It's, you're a steady hand up here, it's been great. A voice, sometimes a reason and putting me, Mayor Pro Tim, you're, we need to make sure that everything's set up, just like today. Sometimes I forget, I get anxious, I get ahead of myself. Thank you. And again, happy retirement to Mary Ann, Marty, and welcome, Chief Bukos. Again, thank you.
This will be my last regular meeting as a mayor or council or whatever I've been for the last 16 years. I have served as an elected official for 19 years in the city of Hazel Park, from 91 to 95 as mayor, from late 91, or 2001, 2002 to 2016 as a council member, and then as mayor from 2016 until the present. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful ride. When I first got elected mayor, immediately, within the first several months, the governor took away all our racetrack revenue. And at that time, the racetrack's contribution to the city of Hazel Park was much greater than it is now. So we immediately had to hit the road running. And for the most part, it's been the same for all those 19 years. It's been a tough road in the city of Hazel Park. But it was my pleasure thinking that I contributed something to where we are today. I would like to thank everybody, but I'd like to thank my family. I'd like to thank my wonderful wife, Claudia, for not just sharing me with the city of Hazel Park, but putting up with me when I get the calls at night and I have to do things that takes away from our family time and our time together.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt you?
Yes.
Would Claudia please stand and be recognized?
She's an angel and we've been, we've actually been married longer than I've been on the council, so. Been married for 48 years. I'd like to thank my children, my daughter Rebecca, my daughter Heather, my son Nathaniel, who were weaned on passing out literature and have probably walked the streets of Hazel Park most of their lives. And again, any time that I've taken away from you with this job, I apologize. But it's something, as was mentioned, it was a job that I took on and I thought I would do it to my very best. I'd like to thank the city administration. In 19 years, I've served with a lot of administrations, served with a lot of city managers, a lot of council people, different chiefs, different attorneys. This council that we've had here, the last part, has been a really interesting mixture of personalities and it really worked out well in getting us to where we are today. We had our disagreements, we came through them and we did what had to be done. As far as the administration goes, what a job they do and the term "thinking out of the box" doesn't even apply to these people. I mean, they come up with things that the rest of the municipalities in the state of Michigan are just thrilled about, that they now have something to use and copy Hazel Park and ways to keep one step out of bankruptcy. And now things are going.
Good.
Good. Now things are looking up and I think it's time that I step aside and spend more time with my family and let, I don't want to say the younger people, but let the younger people come in and strut their stuff. The workers in Hazel Park, you know, they're unbelievable. People talked about you're going to have to take a 10% cut and these people just put their nose to the grindstone and take it. Again, the term "wear many hats" doesn't even apply to Hazel Park. I mean, the people that work here in Hazel Park wear so many hats, it's amazing that they can even stand anymore. They, what they do, everything with nothing. And now we, we're starting to reap the benefits of that. Again, it's a two-by-two square mile city. It's a blue-collar working community. And the people that live in Hazel Park are so phenomenal. I mean, these people, when we come up here and we have an idea as to how to do things and the administration comes up with a plan on how to do them and we ask for people to tax themselves more, people who can hardly afford to keep their, send their kids to college, do whatever they have to do to survive, these people agree. These people say, "Look what they've done, we want to be part of that, we're going to help." And it's just, it's unbelievable. I can imagine that every other city is envious of us because of our citizens. Talking about, there are two people that are here on the council tonight that were on the council when I was appointed to fill a vacancy. I appreciate their confidence in me and I hope I've lived up to their expectations in what I have helped with. Being a council member is a tough job. You have to make tough decisions and I think we have made them and I think it worked out for the best. Chief, congratulations. Chief, congratulations. Mary Ann, congratulations, congratulations. Again, thank you all. Thank all the citizens of Hazel Park, thank the council, the administration, my family and my wife. Thank you all for coming out and participating in the democratic process. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would you please stand? Councilmember Selman, would you please stand?
Thank you once again.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor, support.
Motion to adjourn has been made and supported. Any objections? Be none, we stand adjourned.